I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, girls. At this time, I would like to remind everyone that at the entrance way into the boardroom, there's a sign-in sheet if you'd like to sign in. Mr. Saylor, do we have any revisions to our agenda at this time?
No, we do not. You have the agenda and it's been published.
Okay, thank you. At this time, first on our board agenda, we have some recognitions and we'd like to start with our student recognitions.
Okay. Well, I think the first recognition that we would like to do is we've got Ms. Mallory back with us tonight. And Mallory, of course, was our board representative, our student representative to the board for this past school year. She wasn't able to be with us at the June meeting because she was at Western on a college visit, but she is back with us tonight. And we're glad to have her back with us tonight and we would like to honor her tonight. And I'm going to ask if they would if we could get maybe Austin, you got a camera with you, Austin? We'll take picture. We're going to present Mallory. I'll present Mallory with her certificate and I'll also present her with a Medal of Excellence.
She's going to be a hilltopper, Mr. Saylor.
We're going to present, well, here, let me give you the medal first. Also, you get a Medal of Excellence as well. We appreciate your service to the board and thank you very much. Last spring also, we were, last summer, we were still dealing with COVID-19 if we go all the way back to the year before that. And I know that Ms. Summer wasn't able to be with us and she's still not able to be with us tonight, but I do want to know that we do have a recognition for Summer. And hopefully, we can get her to drop by the office and get that. And Rebecca, I'm going to give this one to you so that we can contact her and she can come by and pick it up at whatever time.
Maybe we could even mail it to her.
We possibly could.
Yeah, mail it to her.
Is she back in Tennessee?
I don't think so.
We might get her to come by and maybe have a donut with her or something.
And get a picture.
Yeah, we'd like to get a picture of her as well. So congratulations to both of those. And I would like to go ahead and as I told everybody earlier, Abby Smith will be our new student representative to the board. Abby was not able to be with us tonight, but she does plan on being here at the next board meeting. And I know she'll do a fantastic job, just like our past two representatives have done.
She's my neighbor.
Well, maybe you can pick her up and bring her with you. That'll be great. Well, at this time, I'm going to ask Mr. Moore to come forward, our athletic director, and we've got a couple of our softball players we want to recognize tonight. So I'm going to sort of turn it over to him and we'll let you borrow a microphone.
Okay, so tonight, we have two impressive young athletes with us. First, I'll talk about Mr. Macy Muncy. So the Kentucky High School Athletic Association actually has a certificate that you can produce throughout the year called the Triple Threat Award. Unfortunately, Macy doesn't qualify for that certificate because in order to qualify for it, you must play a sport in all three seasons, fall, winter, and spring. What Macy does, to me, is more impressive than that, and she participated in two sports last fall, volleyball and girls' soccer, and then two in the spring in softball and track. Not only did she participate in both of them, she led her team or herself as an individual in track to compete in three state tournaments last year. So Macy, we would like to provide you with this certificate for recognition.
Tambo, you and Carrie, we can come forward. I'll let you two present. And then we'll see if we can get somebody to snap a picture for us. If you want to present her with a certificate, and there's the medal, you all go right there in front.
Because I've heard it makes you an asshole.
Macy's not a triple threader, she's a quadruple threader.
Absolutely. And for our next student athlete, extremely proud of this young lady, Ms. Emma Winkle was named Miss Kentucky Softball. She had an exceptional career. My only regret is the sophomore year, the COVID year. Love to see what her numbers look like and what she could have done with that extra year. But Miss Kentucky Softball is here in the boardroom with you tonight and there is, we can't honor her enough. The best part, when I talk to folks about Ms. Emma, is obviously little girls are going to look up to Emma. But I spend time talking to other ADs, coaches, and people around the state, and they're so complimentary of her, but not as a, as an athlete, but who she is as a young lady. The best part about this is throughout history now, this is Miss Kentucky Softball in 2022, and she's from Estill County, and there's not a better individual to represent, not Estill County High School Athletics, but just Estill County in general than Emma Winkle. And we're so very proud of her.
And she's one of our students.
Oh, here, I'm supposed to take a picture. Okay, guys. One, two, three, one more. One, two, three.
I know. I remember that.
Well, that was fun.
That's pretty awesome.
Look at this, Mr. Saylor.
When did you start? Well, she started before that, but that was our first year.
It's all right.
Your first year? You and Chelsea fighting over the picture, ma'am. Yeah, pretty much.
And I don't know if you've been out towards the middle school, but at the entrance of the softball field, there is now a sign that's been displayed by the Kentucky Department of Transportation with Ms. Emma Winkle as our Player of the Year in softball. And I think, I hope I'm not letting the cat out of the bag, she's also been selected as an Estill County Captain for the EDA, the Estill County Development Alliance. And she's going to be representing the county for this coming year as one of the Estill County Captains. So it's a great honor, great honor to have both of y'all here tonight. And our parents are here as well, and we appreciate them being here as well. So thank you.
And Macy's mom and dad are here too?
Yeah. Macy?
Macy's mom and dad are here too.
Well, we're glad to have everybody, so good to be here.
At this time, sometimes you all like to cut out. If you want, you can, but you're welcome to stay. We have facilities in construction at date. Thank you all for coming.
Bye, guys.
We do believe the field will be available the week of the 19th.
Just don't cover it up with a tarp.
No tarts for Mike. All right, I'm putting pressure on Kenny right off the bat here.
All right.
Tell him the field's going to be ready.
Facilities in construction at date, and first, we have our Estill County High School Phase VII renovation project. Take it away.
Two o'clock, about two hour meeting, all the contractors, architects, just over there. Obviously, we're down to the wire. You guys know that. You drive by, you see it. A lot of work to do in the next, in the next month, but I've done this, like I said yesterday, and the guys, I've done this for 22 years. Don't panic, okay? We'll get there. So just kind of give a little quick synopsis of the, I'm not going to forget about the softball field, all that works in my mind done. So as far as the football field, this field itself is complete, okay? Today, we put the last bit of stone down for the track. We'll start paving tomorrow. They're going to next week in the paving part. We'll wrap the fence up in the next couple of weeks. Today, we started pouring our first bit of sidewalks in between the two field houses where the, where the new train car is. That work will start working this way out. The next probably week will be out there starting to mill and putting curbs and start paving. You might not see paving going on in that, on that portion until maybe the first week in August. It's about a two-week process. So we know teachers come back on the 15th, we leave the house on the 15th, so we know all those dates. So there's that in. So as far as the field house itself, today, we started the final coat of paint in the field house. So really, all we like in there is hanging a few doors. The lockers will be here the first part of August. Obviously, there's maybe, you know, some light fixtures put in here or there, but for the most part, the light fixtures are all in. We'll start, the diffusers will be HVAC. They're coming in tomorrow. They came in wrong, so they started getting in, but here they are. So they'll be here tomorrow. We'll start that work. So that should wrap up probably, you know, again, I can give you real dates, exact dates. They're never real, really, in the construction world, but sometime that first, in the first week of August, the first part of the second week of August, we'll wrap up the field house. Moving into the high school, we are, second floor is all but done. First floor admin area, first aid, probably run the first week of August, we'll have that wrapped up. There may be a few things, like reception desk may not be there on, when the school takes over. When the first day of school happens, it should be anybody in. So there's, there's that, the nurse's station. Lower level, that will wrap up in the next probably seven to 10 days, complete. They left it done off the lower level. So those people will be done for sure. And then as far as the lobby area, the gymnasium, that, I think maybe y'all already know this, but that's going to go into the first part of school. So that might not be completed until sometime around the first September with the, and so to let you know, as far as the trophy case, the woodwork that goes around it, that's probably going to be in the middle of September, the end of September for that. But we'll be able to turn over the lobby, the gym back to you guys on the first September. And you guys can have that area, just we won't have the case work done for the trophy case yet. So all in all, it's, it's going. It's, I'm not disappointed, I'm not unhappy. It's just there's a lot to do in the next 20, you know, 25, 28 days. But again, we made it imminent today, so we're going to make it happen. And at this point, I'll take any new questions you got.
So I didn't know whether we're redoing the trophy case. That's pretty cool.
Oh, that gym lobby will be immaculate. It will be immaculate, I'm telling you, when it's all said and done. It's, it finishes everything that we ever hoped for at the high school. We've got a few other little projects, of course, with Peter Esser Projects, of course. We've got the HVAC controls, which that's all on schedule. I know we had a little bit of hiccup with thermostats. They're going in. So the controls will be up. They know the starting date for school. We're hoping that teachers, we believe that teachers may be able to even get in there that first week of August, although we know that the 15th, not the first week, but the following, the week before that, the 8th, they should be able to be in there on the 8th. Now, there's going to be some people working around. Gym, we're just going to have to close it off for a while. We know Labor Day is what we're shooting for. Even though the trophy cases won't be done, we'll be able to use the rest of it. So right now, I think the volleyball team is set up shop at the middle school. And so they're up there. And again, we got NFH cameras up there, so their first matches will be able to be broadcast. Probably will not get the football field until that week of August 12th. So those first soccer games and stuff will be able to take place on that. The field's ready now. They could practice on it tomorrow, but it's not safe. The outside conditions is not safe for them to be getting there. So we're just not going to take that chance. We don't want somebody crilling an ankle in a hole or something, you know, here before season and do something. So we're just not willing to take that chance. But we feel good about everything. I feel good. We've got, we've only got just a couple of issues that we're really trying to iron out, but I think as far as having the stadium ready for play, we're going to be in good shape. The restroom renovations there is also an Esser project. It's on time, will be done. That project will probably extend because there will be a family restroom added after the season. It's part of that project that goes into the old field house. But sanitary sewer lines are done. Believe it or not, the sanitary sewer lines is done. We don't have to worry about sewer for the next 75 years. None of us will ever have to worry about another sewer line, okay? Mallory, maybe one day you can be here and you can talk about replacing the sewer line, but it's done. Everything.
Mr. Ruder got with it.
Mr. Ruder got with it, yes. So that work is done. So I'm, I'm really pleased. Yeah, it'd been nice if we could have had it early, but you know, it's just been, that's the way it is. And I know Kenny, I've bent their ears 100 times. I'll call once a week and I'll fuss a little bit and they listen to, listen to me. But it'll be okay. We've got some things that, there'll be a few little things that might not be perfect, but it's okay.
So the track, so you all start paving tomorrow, is what you said, Kenny? Does that get some kind of rubberized surface?
Yes, should happen sometime that first week of August. At some point in time that week, they'll be in there. Probably about a seven-day process, maybe a little bit more. But hopefully, that track, the surface, the rubberized surface will go down and be down. That's why we can give it to them on the 12th. If, if the surface gets, puts off a little bit, that'll put us off on getting on the field a little bit. But we've got to get the rubber surface put on there because that, once you get into season, it's too late in October, November. Once temperature falls below about 50, 45, 50 degrees, they can't put the rubber surface on there. And we definitely don't want it to impact track next spring. So we'll sacrifice now, so we'll have track next spring. Matter of fact, I put Austin today. We're going to order all track equipment to make sure that it's here. We, we've got a storage situation worked out, so everything's moving. I told you all I'll bring this one home. Now, somebody else have to bring Estill Springs home if you decide to do it, but we'll bring this one home and we'll get it wrapped up. And Peter and Kenny will be here with you no matter what. I may come and visit you one board meeting, but just for the heck of it. But I think we're good. I feel good about it. And I wouldn't tell you that if I didn't. If I thought we had a problem, and I think Kenny's been around long enough, if we had a problem, he'd tell us. We're going to be right up to the last day. We may pour concrete on Friday morning, the 19th. They poured concrete this morning and I was walking on it this afternoon. So that's how.
So I've had a couple of people ask me, at what point in time will the boys get to practice on the football field before a game?
The week of.
So they will be before the, before the game?
The hope is that they'll get to practice on that field the week of. If we get it a couple of days extra, we'll get it, if we can get them there, we'll get them there. But it will not be before probably that Monday.
It can't be. I think they won't have, they won't have before Monday. So Monday at best.
Yeah, I think so.
I'm just going to speak truthfully. I mean, there's just too much to do around there. So however you get in there right now, I've got a lot of concrete paving, curbs, in between the greenhouse and the old field house, old field house, the new field house. There's just too much of that.
The funny thing, it's all going to come together about that week, the week before. It will hopefully all come together. You remember one week before the governor got there, we didn't have black top down, we didn't have anything down for the ATC, and then it was boom, it was done. And that's what we're hoping for here.
You came unhinged.
I've come unhinged today, believe it or not. So Kenny wasn't, Kenny was pretty straightforward today. And Peter had some, we had some tough conversations with a couple others. So we're trying to get going. But God, ain't it going to be nice? I mean, that's all I keep saying. It's going to be nice. It's worth all the fussing, all the sweat, all the tears. It's going to be worth it all that first night. Seven o'clock when we dedicate that thing. Commissioner Tackett has committed to be here. So that's, right now, we're planning on a seven o'clock dedication. We'll probably let the teams warm up and seven o'clock, we'll do a dedication. Once we're done, we'll give them 30 minutes. We'll kick off about 7:45 that evening. So we're good to go. Unless anybody else has any questions.
Okay, I think next on the agenda, we have consideration or approval of a pay estimate 10 for the high school Phase VII project.
$966,775.41 being reviewed by Codell and Ross Tarrant, and it is my recommendation that you pay it.
I need a motion to pay the pay app as discussed. Do I have a motion? Sheila Samples makes a motion. Do I have a second? Tammy Hardy makes a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Next, we have consideration for approval of change order number one for the middle school. No, we're not down to the middle school.
Got to update first.
We got to update you first. Oh, we're going to talk about bathrooms again.
Yeah. Peter.
Yeah, so.
Peter lives for restrooms.
Sewer lines.
You guys, I was, we had a progress meeting, a brief progress meeting today with Jarbo, the contractor out of the middle school. They are really pushing hard and have come a long way. They have 98.5% of their materials. They're lacking just a few sheets of FRP panel, which, once you see it installed, you're going to be amazed. It looks like you've got subway tile on those restrooms now. It looks really, really nice. I was very impressed. And they, they lack a few sheets of those and they're driving to places like Akron, Ohio to get it here for you. It's because, because materials are hard to find. But the good news on this one is, is that they are pushing hard. They do hope to complete work throughout the entire school by the start of school or August 8th, was the, the date that was thrown out today, which is a couple of months early, which I don't get to say much. So they have been pushing really hard on that one. And I do, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
And I know Stephen has been the point of contact on that. And I'm telling you, they have been fantastic, have they not? I mean, they've been a great group to work for. So I really expect, just based on what I'm hearing, that that thing could possibly be 99% wrapped up by the time school starts. There might be a few, couple checklist items, but it, it could be done, so.
So next, we have the consideration and approval of the pay application number two for the middle school renovation project, which is your BG number 22-175.
And you have that pay application. And I think this is, as I said, this was the second pay application. This one's for $175,980.74. It's been reviewed by Ross Tarrant. Again, this is an Esser project, not involving Codell Construction. So has been reviewed, been approved, and it's my recommendation to make that payment.
I like a motion to pay that application as discussed. Ms. Sheila Samples makes a motion. Do I have a second? Carrie Smallwood makes a second. Any discussion? I'd like to call for a vote at this time. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Five oh, vote. Next, we have consideration or approval of pay app, of change order number one.
Yes, and this was requested by the district. It's actually a shutout valve for the domestic water system that's right there around the cafeteria, which will, in the future, allow us to shut that water off. Two restrooms, if we needed to, for any type of repair. And it came about as a need to get it done so we could have water in other areas of the building, but be able to shut it off there. So it was a $682 change order. So we felt like that was well worth the price. So my recommendation is to approve that change order.
I'd like to call for a motion to approve change order number one for the middle school Esser restroom renovation project, which is BG number 22-175. Brian Covey makes a motion. I need a second. Tammy Hardy makes a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Brings us down to our South Urban Early Childhood Center Esser renovation project.
Yes, so the contractor you have at the middle school is also at South Urban. So we had a brief meeting with Jarbo today. We're going to have a more intense, in-depth meeting with them on Monday afternoon to talk about South Urban. They are, it's, it's a bit more challenging of a project, but they are, just like at the middle school, deeply engaged. And I'm confident they'll have the building ready for the start of school. We're meeting on Monday because I do expect Jarbo to be at South Urban, a little bit beyond. Their, their substantial completion date is in October at South Urban. So I do expect them to be on site with school in session, finishing up some work on the glazing. The windows had a fairly long lead time on this one. So we will be, we'll be talking about that a lot on Monday. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you, that you have on that one.
I know, just, and you all may have some questions. I know, again, the windows are to delay, but the, the wall panels have been studied. I think we got an approval for a new masonry product along the windows.
Yes, you did.
Submitted, but it's been approved, which is going to allow them to complete the siding on the outside. But the plywood is going to stay in place to the windows. We may very well start the year without windows in those classrooms. But we have classrooms at the high school that don't have windows. I mean, it's just one of those things. And they'll sort of have them as we, once they come in, it won't take them long. They'll just pop the plywood off, stick the windows in, and a couple afternoons, they'll have them in. I don't know. Did you get an actual delivery date for those?
No, but I did request that, and he's working hard to find out exactly when it would be. So we'll follow up again on Monday.
The storefront, the aluminum storefront for the secure entrance?
Is with, it's all the same order.
It's all the same order. So of course, we'll, as soon as we can, we'll get those addressed. And, but it's coming along nicely. We, we did approve an RFI, which had come back to use a change order on that project for, to revamp some of the shelving that was in there that needed to be upgraded. And we went ahead and I think you approved last time, I think, the ceiling grid upgrade, which is when they did that project seven years ago, when I first got here, the ceiling tile only went out to the windows because the windows went all the way up. Now, it's going to tie back in and everything to tie in. It looked like it was just the way it should be. So it's going to be a good project. They'll be able to get in school. They don't start until the following week, which is, I think their first day is like the 21st, 22nd on that Monday. But again, they're really pushing hard to get things done. So I don't know if any other questions?
No other than that. Babies are safe, that's all it matters.
They are safe, and we're going to talk about an additional safety feature maybe here in a minute, if you all want to go in that direction. So right now, as we know, school safety is on the forefront, as it should always be. It should not take a school incident for us to always be thinking about school safety. So that's it for the update, if there's no questions.
No questions then. I need consideration or approval of pay application number two for the South Urban Early Childhood. for the South Irvin Early Childhood Center renovation project, which is BG number 22-176.
$63,238.34. It's been reviewed and approved for payment by Ross Tarrant, and I recommend that we do so.
Sheila Samples makes a motion. Do I have a second? Tammy Hardy makes a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. 5-0. Next, we're down to the high school ESSER fieldhouse restroom renovation project. Give us an update, Peter.
Yes, so we met with that contractor today, with SES, Anthony Patrick. They are on schedule to be complete on time and ready for that first football game. They have demoed everything, and they've got their color schedule, and all, all materials are on order, and they don't foresee any issues, so. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
We doubled the size of the women's bathroom at the stadium.
Yes.
The men's restroom stayed the same, but as I told you, after season, there will be a family restroom added that will be along the promenade into the stadium. So, we'll have plenty of public restroom facilities for that facility. And Anthony, we've worked with Anthony now on several projects. He'll get it done. You don't have to worry about him. He's a good old Knott County boy. He lives now in Winchester. If he doesn't, we might send Kenny after him, even though he ain't got nothing to do with it, so. But Anthony, oh, Anthony is A number one, so that's it on that project, unless you got a question.
Questions? Okay, it brings us down to Estill Springs Elementary ESSER renovation and addition project.
Now, we'll let Kenny take back over here, and hear him chime in.
So, yeah, we took, we took bids there on, I think it was July the 12th. As you guys know, this job is just, you know, base bid to classroom addition with some exterior site work, you know, alterations with your memorial and all that, your playground area and all those areas. Honestly, the bidding wasn't what I wanted it to be, but also, it wasn't one of those jobs that was real appealing. So, I'm not really making excuses, but we had a couple packages that didn't have any bids at all. Even though they told me there were bidding the day before, they just didn't, you know, I think that day, there were seven jobs bidding that day. So, again, I'm looking for excuses, but there's two options out there. There's option one, that is the base bid, which is the two classrooms. And it has the, has the playground in it, which is alternate one. Alternate two is the amphitheater, which will be the concrete work out there for your, for your sit-down classroom area. And then alternate number seven is replacing your kitchen flooring. Alternate number eight is replacing your toilet partitions in all your bathrooms. Nine is an alternate for your owner-preferred hardware. It's no cost. And then 10 was additional landscaping, okay? So, all that came in at a total, if you took all those options, all those different alternates, that came in as $3,681,351, okay? That does not include the two classroom additional addition, which makes four classrooms. It also does not account for your canopy that would be on the outside of the building, whether if it's a two-classroom or four-classroom. And the reason is, we got an alternate for that, and the cost was so, so great that we thought we could redesign that, come up with a different way of saving you guys some money. So, those options are not included in this option number one. It is at the lesser amount, like I said, the $3,681. And then, obviously, we had to rebid two packages, so we would try to rebid the, the baby package, which is bid package one, and then rebid the glass package, which is only like four windows and one door. We tried to rebid those. If you, not if you pass that motion to rebid, I'll rebid those on August the 3rd, and that's just because of the way your paper has to run for circulation due to the advertisement. And, and obviously, I think at this point, we're estimating somewhere along the lines of around $440 to $450 for those two items. So, the asphalt's around $4,000. Again, it's estimates. I mean, you never know if you get bids. And then the glass is around $40,000. So, I mean, that's, that's the one option. Not trying to get away from that one, but I want to give you the option two before we start really talking about it. Option two includes the base bid, which again is the two classrooms. It would include the playground, the amphitheater. It would not include the canopy, like I said before. It would include alternate number four, which is the two additional classrooms, and the fit-up as well. So, right now, we have, alternate number four is just a shell space. You have the option of coming in and finishing it later with finishes like flooring and ceiling tile and all that. Or, in this option here, alternate number five is, that's the cost for the fit-up. Alternate number seven is the kitchen flooring again, again, the toilet partitions. And then lastly, it would be the landscaping. And that total is obviously, you know, more extensive. It's $4,617,290. So, again, in the same scenario, we'd have to rebid those same packages, bid package one and bid package five. And again, those numbers will be, you know, $440 in the neighborhood there for an estimate.
So, it'd bring the total to about $5 million?
A little over $5 million, yeah. So. I'll take any questions. Got any questions?
Guys, I sort of gave you a summary sheet there, too, about basically what is the big difference between option one and option two? Is that option two gives you two additional classrooms. You're getting pretty much everything else with option one. And it does not include a canopy, because we're gonna, it just needs to be redesigned. What was designed is just too expensive.
And when reused, the canopy that's there?
We talked about that, and we don't think that it can be taken out of the ground and reused. Talking about the current canopy that's on the.
Can't take apart, be taken away from the post, removed from the.
We're gonna explore.
Are they welded on there?
Yeah, it's, it's all stick-built, which means it's all built in the field. If it was a prefabricated unit, which I recommend that we probably look into.
We are.
That's something you could, you could pick up and move. This, you don't even think about it. It's, it's in the ground. It's welded. Yeah.
It'd be cheaper to go ahead and do a fabricated new structure than it would to take that one down, try to save it, then try to reinstall it. I guess the one thing that if we remember back to our discussions during the reorganization, is that one of the main things that was discussed at that time was the fact that Estill Springs did not have a full-time gym, or a full-size gym. And we also discussed at that point in time that that would possibly be included in the new district facility plan that would be developed this fall. I personally think there's two things going on here. One thing that you all have always said as a board, you do not want to bond us all the way out. We do not want to bond out all of our money. And as you can see right now, I put there in option one, by the time you take all of the construction costs plus the soft cost, you're looking at about a $5 million project for option one. I've showed you that we have $3.2 million in ESSER funding, and about $1.7 million would be bonded, and that's how that would be paid for. If you did option two, I'm not sure you've got the money to pay for it, because we've got about $3.3 million in bonding, and that's as of right now. You would leave yourself with less than a half million dollars in bonding potential. And even though that would go up again next July, it's gonna take you a while to recover from that. And I just, I cannot sit here and recommend that, to be honest with you. I would not want to do that. I know what it's like to come into a school district and have no money. And you don't, I just personally do not believe that, number one, you all should put yourself in that position. I don't think we should put the taxpayers in that position, and we don't need to put the new superintendent in that position. That's my personal opinion. If you decide to do this project and do the two classrooms, I do not think that's a bad thing. They, they can use the two additional classrooms. It also gives you time to set back and look at enrollment numbers, because now for the second, now for the second time in approximately five years, we're seeing another lull in enrollment. You have right now about 130 kindergarten students, whereas normally, in a year, we would experience somewhere between 150 and 170, which has been the case for the last three years. But you also have a fifth grade out there that has 130 students in it. So, you got a small fifth grade class, you got fourth, third, second, and first. It's pretty decent, somewhere between 150 and 170. But now, you got a kindergarten class with 130, and you've got a preschool that's struggling to meet enrollment for four-year-olds over there, even though we're right now at about 150 preschoolers. There are less than 140-year-olds. So, what it also does is I think it gives you time to see exactly what's going on with your enrollment. Maybe it's just another small dip. You know, maybe it's something for time to come. Building two classrooms does not hurt you, because they already need the space. And even if you build those two classrooms, and enrollment continued to be down a little bit, they could continue to use that space. But it sort of gives you time to look at it. It gives you a couple of years to build up your bonding potential. And then, if you want to come back, if we create a new DFP, which we'll do that this spring, Stephen will be in charge of that, and of course, I'll assist him on doing it. But Estill Springs will be the number-one priority project in that facility plan. And the reason why it is, there's nothing else left to do. There are no other facilities to do. So, it's the only thing that's gonna be on your facility plan. And if you do that, then you can build a new gym, and you can take the current gymnasium, expand the lunchroom. You can expand the media center, and you can get two classrooms right there. So, there's your two other classrooms, and basically, the only new construction would be the gym out back. So, I, I think that is the wise thing to do. I think that's the prudent thing to do. It's what I would recommend for us doing. This does include all the safety upgrades at Springs as well, with all the doors, door hardware, everything, which is very important, because we're gonna talk about, the last thing today in facilities is possibly looking at the only two things we got left in safety to do, which I feel like is more important than adding the two classrooms right now. So, I don't know if you got any questions for Kenny or Peter. We've looked at this. We went about it a couple different ways. But you really don't have to make a motion and approve option one or option two, because if you vote to rebid those two packages, that's pretty much what you're doing.
Right.
Tonight. You're, you're saying we're going with option one, and that's how we're gonna move forward. Yes, Tammy?
Could we not put the outdoor classrooms and that on the district? To put it behind for a little bit, until we can get the classrooms built? Because I feel the classrooms are more important than the outdoors.
It's like comparing peanuts to steak. The outdoor classroom, the cost is so little. The classrooms are about $400,000. They're somewhere around $450,000 apiece.
That's a savings.
Okay, the, the outdoor classroom is not that extensive in terms of what the cost is. Plus, you've got to remember this one thing, guys. You're using ESSER funds. What does ESSER funds talk about? They talk about increasing space, but they also talk about air quality. And a lot of the things that they talk about in those ESSER funds is having outdoor classrooms. And it's a great question, Tammy, but in reality, that outdoor classroom probably only costs $70,000, where a classroom's gonna cost you $400,000. It's really not a trade-off. And the amphitheater, in my opinion, you can't do away with, because that's part of the Irvin monument. And I just don't think you want to leave that off. I think that's sort of a promise that we have promised alumni of Irvin High to try to bring that thing to a final.
I'm not saying, I was just saying if we could move it back a little bit.
Well, the difference between option one and option two is about a million dollars, if you look at it. And Mr. Saylor's saying, we can do option two, but on your bonding potential, it's gonna leave you about a half million dollars for future projects or facilities, emergencies, things that happen. So, it'll take you right down to no money, other than what you have left in your contingency, and we don't want to touch that.
No, we've already, and you, as you know, we've already created a restricted building account to finish the high school project, which you're gonna have to use about a million dollars to finish the high school athletic complex, because it may not be a million, but we're gonna spend close to 8, 850, so to finish that project. Because right now, technically, in terms of what we have in the BG one, it doesn't cover the total cost of the high school project. At some point in time, we're gonna have to make that transfer in order to be able to pay our bills.
He's not saying that we can't do option two. He's just giving you the financials on the two projects, and we need to decide what kind of risk we're willing to take to, to do either option one or option two, and how much money we would have left in the end. Option two, you get Utopia. You get everything you're looking for, except a new gym.
That's right. And the two classrooms, basically, is the difference. It's a million dollars difference. As you can see, 3.681 and 4.617. It's a $1 million difference for those two classrooms.
And you've got that in your bonding, but that's gonna take you down to about a half million dollars left in bonding. But this should finish up a lot of our projects, so it just depends on how much money that you want to leave in bonding. Do you wanna do Utopia in number two, or do you want to go with option one and be conservative and leave some money for bonding?
And again, that's why I suggested that you've got to do something with the old gym if you build a new gym, and there's enough space in that old gym to expand the lunchroom, expand the media center, and build two classrooms. So, you technically have those already within the four walls.
Correct.
So, you're not having to build two more classrooms, and believe me, it's gonna be cheaper to renovate and build two classrooms within the four walls than it is to take these two right now. Plus, the prices are gonna come back down. They, they're never gonna go back to what they were, but they're not gonna stay where they're at. Kenny actually bid a project this week that, believe it or not, bid on budget. And it's just, prices are coming down. Steel's coming down. All those things are coming down in the fall. But we're right now, I mean, in order for us to move forward and you to be ready for next school year, we just don't have the luxury to put it off. That, that's just my recommendation. I'll, of course, I'll do, we'll do whatever you guys or whatever the board wishes. But I could see a scenario, if you go with option two, you will have less than $500,000. And then, if they run into an issue, you're gonna have to go into your contingency and general fund to finish it. I'm just.
Brian was asking, can you rebid? And the way these bids come in is you take each piece of the project, and correct me if I'm wrong. You take a bid for painting, a bid for windows, a bid for hardware, a bid for whatever is needed in that, and you bid those out, and whoever gets the low bid, you put all of that in your total bid package.
Correct. So, if you're talking about a total rebid, like rebid the whole project?
Yeah, that's what he's asking about.
Yeah, so, that question's asked a lot, but I can tell you, my, all you've been doing is, if you rebid now with, and again, if you have a lot of participation, that might make a lot of sense. Where this job's not real clean.
Yeah.
The price is gonna go up. I can almost guarantee you. And if anybody was sitting here, if your fiscal agent was sitting here, you've probably seen the same thing happen over, over the years as well. I mean, you know, those guys throw the numbers in, and then it becomes one of those things where either somebody's not gonna bid it, and that guy knows he's only bidder, his number's gonna go higher.
Well, you've got a school district next door that waited and waited, and they kept waiting. And then, when they bid it, it came in almost 150% above projected costs. And now, they don't have a new school, and they can't move forward. They're stuck. And they passed a recolable nickel. Imagine if we was in that place, that you pass a recolable nickel, you're collecting the money, but you can't do nothing with the money, because costs are too high. So, it's really something, if you're gonna, if you're gonna do it, now's the time to do it. I just would not recommend that you do all four classrooms. I think you take the two classrooms and you move forward. Give it a couple years. You guys will all still be on the board, and you'll be able to make the decision whether or not you want to have a Phase 3 project. And prices will come down.
So, if we do option one, we would have a new gym for Estill Springs?
No.
No, no, in the future. New gym is in the future. That's never been on the table.
But in the future means that you've got to, number one, have the bonding potential to do it, because that's.
Where bonding goes up this fall.
It'll, it'll increase a little bit in July, but now, though, here's the other factor. Interest rates are going up. If you remember back in the spring, we had a bonding potential of $3.7 million. Interest rates has went up. Now, we're down to about 3.4, 3.3, 3.4. Interest rates goes up again here in the next few weeks, your bonding potential's gonna fall to 3.1. So, there's a possibility, even before you bid, even before you accept this, and we get the bid, or get the bond sold. the bid, or get the bond sold, if those interest rates goes up, it's going to cost us and our bonding potential's going to go down. I believe that, I'm sorry. And I believe that I can tell you all, and I've tried never to steer you wrong, and I'm just going to speak for John Q. Public out here and our taxpayers. I personally believe that going with option two is not the right move. I do not believe that it is physically responsible to do that. Now, it's your all's choice, but my recommendation is that if we're going to move forward, you go with option one and rebid these two packets.
Now, the hardware update goes along with safe schools.
Yes, that's right.
So that's one of your safety upgrades. And then the bathroom project, the petitions, if you recall, when we did the tour, some of the paint was peeling, and that was what that was to fix, correct?
Exactly. And then the kitchen floor was...
And then the kitchen floor, remember, we toured that, and we felt like it needed to be replaced. So that's what that is. Now, I have had a couple of people ask me, why do anything else to Estill Springs? Why don't you just do the outdoor classroom? And...
And table all of our money.
And table all of our money. Just hang on to what we got, do the $60,000, $70,000 outdoor classroom and get the playground equipment. I've had a couple of people ask me about that, but we really felt like they needed the space.
And they need a classroom.
And then you are talking about rebidding because a lot of that is all within the general trades packet. So you're starting to pick that general trades packet apart and saying you want part of it, not all of it. Now you're going to rebid it. Matter of fact, it's going to take a lot of work. It's going to take reorganizing the documents, which is going to delay this probably at least two or three months if you wanted to pull all the classrooms out.
And I understand all that. I think we're just playing the devil's advocate by looking at all the scenarios and what each one of them means. And we've talked about this throughout the week. So just answering questions and trying to...
Good deal.
Figure it all out.
No, that's what we need to do right now. We need to all feel good about moving forward.
But if we do vote tonight, we would rebid option one and option five.
Bid package one.
I mean, bid pa...
I'd say being in the...
I meant to say bid package one and five, not option one.
And Kenny, let me say this, and you correct me if I'm wrong. In terms of alternate bid number 10, you've got a fantastic price. That is, that is a fantastic price. It is at what you would expect. It's not toilet petitions. That's an excellent price. The kitchen floor, that's a better price than we had four years ago to do that kitchen floor. So that is a excellent price. The playground equipment is in line with playground equipment we bought three years ago. So all of those alternates that we're talking about taking in option one, they're great prices. The cost of this project is in those two classrooms and that site work in the parking lot. That's where the cost is at. That's where the money's at.
I could come back and forth for the output for these bid packages. So like, number one with Hingle, it's a dollar on the first one, it's a dollar on the second one. On the general trades, the Rising Sun Development, it's the same price as... I'm trying to figure out where the other 935...
It's your alternate number four and five.
Four and five, when you go to option two.
Yeah, four and five, all that money you add up.
And option one, it says rejected, Carrie.
Okay, okay.
So the 755-13 or whatever, and the 185, you add those up, it's about a million dollars.
Okay. That's what I was trying to go back to fourth here.
The dollar, all that does is I had no bids. I got to put a dollar in from my computer program to work.
Right, right. Which I understood that. I was just trying to figure out the difference in the...
Yes, ma'am.
Price in between both of them here.
Yeah.
Yeah, like I said, the million dollars is the two additional classrooms. That's what it boils down to. And listen, guys, that's a lot. Classrooms before this pandemic hit would cost you about $250,000 to $275,000 a classroom. That just goes to show you, we're paying double. And here's the other thing. If you were building a school that had 20 classrooms, that price is going to be lower. You're bidding a project that's got four classrooms. It's the same mobilization by that company to build four classrooms or build 20.
Same general can do.
So you're paying a premium just because you're just talking about an addition of two classrooms. And that's part of the problem with driving this up, the cost right now.
And remember, in option two, you would complete two, but you would have two that were shells.
If I could add, just what Mr. Saylor said earlier about the two classrooms you could potentially get in the old gym, that's a no-brainer as far as money-wise. I mean, you're going to spend more than half, less than what you would spend right now. So like, in two years from now, when all this ESSER money dries up, prices will go down, and you already have, it's already under root. I mean, you know, all you got to do now is finish it out, fit it up. So that, to me, that makes, that makes all the sense in the world to me to... I couldn't justify spending a million dollars on two, two classrooms.
It gives you two years to look at your enrollment. It gives you two years to see if you even need them. You need the gym no matter what, probably. But it gives you two years to sit here.
One of the things that we could say about this project, and we've done it in the past, is you could call it phases. And you could say, this is the first phase in our Reno project. We're adding two classrooms now, but in phase two, we'll come back and look at the gym or converting the gym to classrooms. And then phase three would be to build a new gym. I mean, you could look at it in phases. If that, if that would make a difference and make people understand that we're not done just because we're building two classrooms, we're going to come back and revisit it.
We've actually been referring to this project as phase two because the one we did four years ago was technically phase one. So phase three, we... You're already there. So that, any other questions? And if not, then I guess, Ms. Donna, you would ask for what they would want to do with item B, which be... And I think what we would do is that we would, the motion or the approved motion would be to rebid packages one and package five with the intent of accepting option one moving forward.
So I would like to call for a motion to consider approval of, to rebid package number one, which is the asphalt paving, and package number five, which is the windows and the glazing, with the intent to come back and approve option number one as our project at Estill Springs. So I need a motion. Sheila Samples makes a motion. Do I have a second? Tammy Hardy makes a second. Do we have any further discussion?
So at some point in time, yeah, no, I'll table that and I'll talk to about later.
Okay. So I'd like to call for a vote at this time. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
What that also does is it lets Kenny go ahead and tell these contractors that have already put bids in, successful bids. It lets them also know that, how we're moving forward so they can start making plans because they will start making plans. But we can't award contracts until we approve the other two bid packets.
Yeah, all, to me, my sense of intent to award, that gets the ball rolling there, and then we'll bid that, the package is out, what did I say, August 3rd?
August 3rd.
Yeah, August 3rd.
And you've got a great group of contractors. It's some of your very, your high school contractors have moved on to just come to this job. So it's a really a good group.
Okay. So now I need consideration or approval of the meeting date and time for a special call board meeting on August 5th, 2022 at 12:00 PM. Brian Koby makes a motion. Do I have a second? Carrie Smallwood makes a second. Do we have any discussion? Would we come in person or would that be a Zoom?
I think we could do it virtual. I think virtual meetings are still allowed. We'll let Rebecca check on that, but...
I was just curious because it's the middle of the day.
That's my mama day.
I think if we can, we can do it virtually that day. I would like, if we do receive our tax rates before then, I would like to go ahead and approve our, set our initial tax rate as well because they're already asking at the judge's office about our tax rate. And just so the public knows, our intent, our intent, I believe, and everybody would agree with this, is to freeze the current tax rate at the current rate, not raise rates. We have no reason to raise tax rates, in my opinion. So that would be our intent, but we'll add that to the agenda when the time comes. So you've got a...
I need a call for a vote. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries, 5-0. Move forth, Kenny.
Rebecca, one last one. Make sure you follow up, make sure you follow up with Angie. We've got to get the advertisement in the paper this coming week. So it's got to go in tomorrow, so it will be in the paper on Wednesday 30th. Thank you, Kenny.
Yes, sir.
Okay, next on our agenda, we have our Estill County High School ESSER sanitary line replacement update.
Another sewer.
Another sewer line.
Yeah, another sewer line. So this one, the work is complete and has been inspected, and I think, I believe it is functioning, right? So that's all good news. We're working with LACCO and Jared Khan on closeout for this particular project, and you all should see pay application. And we may have had, may have one change order still out. I can't, I'll have to check and see, but...
Yeah, I think we'll need to approve the change order to take in consideration changes, and then it's going to be one and final payout.
That is true.
Payout one, and it will be the final payout. So one thing and be done.
Yeah.
Do we have any discussion on that? All right, next we have our district central storage building demolition project, which is old Urban High School.
Yes, so it's been quiet there on site for a little while. I did get an update today from Paul Blanton. He is with Combs Trucking, the contractor there. And they had a bit of an issue with their, their dozer, but that is all cleared up. They are going to be back on site doing fill and grading. And so fill, grading, and seating is what they have left to do there, right? And they are expecting to be out there this coming Monday, and he thinks they'll be complete with the work by the end of next week.
And so we have consideration and approval of a pay application, number one, for the Estill County Central Storage Demolition Project, which is BG 22-208.
Make the motion.
Sheila Samples makes a motion. Do I have a second? Brian Koby makes a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries, 5-0.
And for the record, that was $52,181.64.
Sorry, I forgot to say that.
No, it's okay.
Okay, next on our agenda, we have our high school emergency sanitary line replacement project. That's on there twice.
Now, they're two different projects.
They're two different projects.
We're on sewer again.
You got the one at the south end, and you got the one in front of the high school.
Yeah, so this is the one in front of the high school, and it's going to be like really deja vu.
This is the rear end.
Yeah, this is the...
Now, this is the front end. As a matter of fact, the other one is the rear end. The middle end is part of the high school project. So there's three ends here.
There actually were three parts of this beast. But just like the other one, Mr. Ruer has completed the work on the project. We are working on closeout documents with them, and the line was installed and inspected. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have on that one.
And this will be one and final payout next board meeting.
Yes.
No change orders, just approve the bill.
Okay. And so then we, I guess that's it for Peter.
Almost.
Oh, yeah, one more?
Almost. I get to just listen to this next one, but I want to hang out.
To reconvene the local planning committee. So we need to consideration or approval of a request to reconvene the local planning committee to consider finding for South Urban Elementary concerning school safety upgrades.
And let me update you real quick, and it was on the bottom of the sheet there that I gave you just a minute ago, and it's under the dash line. As you know, school safety should always be on the forefront. This is something that we wanted to do as part of our ESSER projects, and we were denied. They were told, they told us that we could not spend ESSER funds for school safety, which is the craziest thing I've ever heard of in my life. But that was the ruling that come down. And I have spent all kinds of times with our U.S. Representative's Office. I've spent time with Senator McConnell's office. They believe that you can, but they're not willing to go to bat for it, to get something changed. And we just batted it back and forth, and quite frankly, I about gave up on it. But then, when all this came about, and I just felt like it's important that all of our doors on, in every school, we have kids, that they're upgraded. And it doesn't mean the current doors do not work. What it means is that there are some fail-safe measures that you can put in place that will help ensure that doors are locked when they're supposed to be. And I really feel like that since you've agreed to take option one, I really feel like that it is in our best interest then to explore doing a district safety project that would be an emergency BG1, that would change the locks for the schools at Estill County Middle School and South Urban Elementary. Once that's done, every lock in this district will be upgraded. And for $350,000, that's not a lot to pay for the safety of our kids. And I think that it's a no-brainer. We need to get this on the fast track and get it done because you don't want to sell bonds for $350,000. You want to sell it as part of the Estill Springs project and do one bond sale to save all of the bond fees and everything else, which means we'll bond about $2 million, and it will still leave us about $1.2, $1.3 million. And it will have every door upgraded. Here's the other thing about this. Every building in this district will be on one key system. So Todd Breece will have one key, and other than the central office offices...
That's it.
That's what they got right now.
I know.
You'll have one key. So Todd Breece is the district maintenance person will have one key that fits every door except for the three different sets of doors in here. Even the outside doors here that you all saw coming in, they're upgraded on that district master. All outside door keys will be gone. Teachers will no longer have an outside door key. They've got a badge. They scan the badge. They swipe the badge. If that teacher comes in at nine o'clock at night, it tells us that teacher comes in at nine o'clock at night. At 10 o'clock at night, it shuts down. Nobody can get in the building unless it's one of the district maintenance people or it's the principal. The only people that have outside door keys is the building administrators, the custodians, and district maintenance. Everybody else has a badge. It's the only way you get in. It's the only way you'll be able to get in central office. That's how you'll get into central office gym, to have a scanner on it. You scan your badge.
Will we be, have one?
Yes, we'll give you a badge that you can just get in yourself when you come in.
I've done the badge at West Urban.
So it will take a little while to get all that done, but it puts everybody on the same key. It makes it easier for everybody to gain access. And a West Urban teacher's key will not fit at the high school. A high school coach that needs to get into high school can get in the high school, and they can get in this gym because sometimes they practice here, but they can't get in everywhere else. So it is going to be a great security enhancement, and that's the reason why we're asking you to reconvene this committee. Because if you remember, four years ago, we made South Urban transitional. At the May meeting, the board voted to make South Urban a permanent facility, but it's not on the facility plan. So now we've got to add it in order for us to be able to bond that money. It's only $75,000 at South Urban, but they're going to make us jump through the hoop to do it right, which we need to. So we're going to ask the LPC, the Local Planning Committee, to meet next week if you all will approve this motion, asking them to do a finding for South Urban Elementary. So that's my recommendation.
I need a, I need a motion to approve, to reconvene the local planning committee to consider the finding for South Urban Elementary concerning school safety upgrades.
I make a motion.
Sheila Samples makes a motion. Do I have a second? Tammy Hardy makes a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
I will ask, we had any...
I will ask, we had any, can I find another resource, officer?
Sheriff Flynn has hired a second SRO for our elementary school campuses, and that SRO will have an office at West Urban, but will be on a rotating schedule throughout. We're also, I'm meeting with Mr. Burkhardt next Tuesday as one of the city council members, and we'll be meeting with Mayor Rose to ask for coverage at Estill Springs. So I feel like those things are going to.
Thank you.
Peter, thank you. You don't let me know about a virtual meeting on the LPC. Thank you. So I appreciate you, Peter.
Thank you.
And for the record, they're working him to death. And I'm telling you what, he's doing yeoman's work for Ross Hart right now. There's a lot of money out there, a lot of ESER money out there, a lot of projects, and he's really good to us. I want you all to know that. I've told him that personally. But I really, once this is done, once these doors are done, there's not another thing I could have knocked off the list in district facilities, other than that gym at Estill Springs. Everything's done.
Is that gym cleared out now, ready for school?
It will be ready for school. Yes, they will have their gym.
Will they have storage someplace?
There is some, we've got it figured out on storage. We've got everything figured out, yeah. And we'll update that here in just a minute. So thank you all for that.
Okay. Next on our agenda, Mr. Saylor is action items.
Yes, the first one is our handbooks, and those were submitted to you guys. They're each one posted. These are just revisions, each of those handbooks, and we have not given a hard copy of these books to our employees in the last couple of years due to COVID, but now they will all be receiving a hard copy this time. It's all been updated based on those board policies that you approved last time. And so you all, you all know what these look like. There's not very many changes. A lot of the changes have to do with payroll, as you know. We had our first July 15th payroll in this school district ever last week, and we'll have July 30th coming up. Our teachers know when they're being paid. It's being communicated. Our finance department, HR department's worked very hard to get that done. I'm asking you to approve all three of those handbooks for submission to KSBA, and we'll have them printed.
Can you also do it digitally?
Yes, they'll also go on the website, yes.
I need a motion to approve our revisions to our handbooks.
I make a motion.
Sheila Samples makes a motion. Do I have a second? Tammy Hardy makes a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries, 5-0. Next, we have our FY 23 student discipline code and school supplements.
I know that Mr. Donald Norton has spent a lot of time, and of course, our administrators will be back at the August meeting. I gave them all off tonight, so you all will know that it's not the fact they didn't not want to show up, and Steven's still here, as you know, and I think Angie may be upstairs working. Of course, we always bring Jeremy here. We can't do without him. So we love to have him here. But one of the major things was that we wanted to make sure of is that our school handbooks corresponded with board policy and all of our board discipline code. And they've worked really hard on the matrix that was in this handbook, because this is what determines, it's page 32, if you want to run to it, Jeremy, real quick. And they put a lot of time into this matrix, because what we don't want to have happen, we've got about four more to go, should, go to the, just the handbook itself, not one of the school supplements. I think that's it. There's the matrix. The one thing that we want to make sure of is we want to make sure that a student at the middle school that has an infraction is treated no different than a student at the high school. We want to make sure that there's consistency across the district, and it also pretty much details what you do in this particular case. Now hopefully, this is looking at the bad end of things when it gets to this point. All of our schools have met with our PBIS committees. We're making sure that we're communicating PBIS and what that means at each of our schools to try to make sure that everybody is being treated fairly. They did a lot of work when it came to vaping, and I know we, we've had a lot of issues with vaping, and I'm going to tell you right now, it bothers me that we have stores in Irving, Kentucky that's selling vape products to students that's under 18 years old. And I'll just quite be honest with them, and I'm almost at a point that I'm getting ready to go public and name who they are, because I'm tired of having to deal with it. And we have kids that are obtaining vape cartridges that have marijuana in them and hemp products in them, and that's a violation of student code of conduct when it comes to the drug policy. And I'm letting parents know right now, we're not going to waiver on that. I don't care if they can buy it at the local convenience store. If it has THC in it, it's going to be treated as a drug violation, period. We're not supposed to be doing it anyway. So I want everybody to know that, and we've got a lot of parents that got upset this past year over that, and the bottom line, they can be upset over it. We're not going to approve that. I'm not going to, I'm not going to listen to that. Somebody else after me might, a board after you all might, but I just don't believe that's what we should be expecting from our teenagers, and we're not even just talking about teenagers here. We've got elementary kids that's vaping, and we've got parents that's buying it for them, and I don't know, God have mercy, I don't know what you're thinking about, but be a parent, for God's sake. There's no way kids should be vaping. That's just my standpoint, and we're going to treat them as drug violations if they're vaping THC products, period. So I want everybody to understand that tonight. So the only one of these books that you're actually approving is the district book. Now, I had Rebecca attach the others for the other four schools, and I think South Urban has one as well. I don't think they, it's not in the same type of handbook, but we need to ask Tony Garrett and Rebecca if we do, and we didn't even work with Tony Garrett, because it's totally different for preschoolers. They have a little different school handbook, but we'll get you a copy of it as well. But I'm asking you all to approve the district code of conduct handbook. We're printing these also, 2,400 copies. It's the first time we've printed them in about three or four years, so everybody will take one home. So that's my recommended motion.
And once again, they'll all be on, digitally on the line.
They're also going to be digital online. That's correct. It'll be on each school website as well as our site.
So I need a motion to approve the discipline district code, school handbook. Brian Covey makes a motion. Sheila Samples makes a second. Do we have any discussion? All in favor? They put so many words on this agenda tonight, it's all tongue twisters.
And let me do, let me make one other point. If your child gets caught with a vape device, it is not returned. So it is lost. You will not be receiving it back, so that's for the record. Thank you.
Next, do you want to talk about the, or consider the approval of the adult education in my way?
Yeah, it's really, really a quick thing. It's something that's not a lot of money on our part. Matter of fact, adult ed costs us nothing. BCTC is our new adult ed partner, okay? And part of the, part of that plan is because BCTC is tied very close to that Career Tech Center, and the hope is, is that's how your adult ed classes is going to come about. We're hoping that the first adult education classes can be taught this coming spring, in the spring of '23, okay? That is the goal right now.
At the ATC Center?
At the AT.
Because I was wondering why we were doing a little circle. Why couldn't we go to the.
Dr. Acapo is committed. He's committed to this, and we put a lot of good things in place last year. We got our dual credit program up and running for high school students. This is the second year for most of those instructors, and the problem is right now, getting them certified so they can offer credit through BCTC. We sort of crossed the first hurdle with that, and I'll be working with Ms. Combs, and again, so everybody knows that the ATC, again, is run by the Kentucky Department of Education. It is not a Estill County school facility, or school program. We own the facility, but we basically lease it to KDE. So we'll be working with Ms. Combs, our new principal, and she will be here next month. She was at, she's at the Career Tech Conference, so she couldn't attend tonight. She'll be here next month. Fantastic lady. We hated to see Mr. Hall go, but I do believe that we are going to be okay. I think she's going to do a fantastic job. And Mr. Hall has told us that he will help us in any way. He feels this near and dear to his heart, first principal's job, and he'll help in any manner that he can. But this is the next step for BCTC to be involved. I think it's, it's less than $3,000 they're going to owe us for the entire school year, I believe, if you look at that contract, wasn't it? If you go on up, go right there. $3,000 total is what they're going to owe us. They're only leasing a copier from us. They can't lease a copier in that program, because it has to go through the university somehow, which we already had a copier there. It's easy for us to do, and we pay the utilities. It's already in our name, because we used to run the adult ed program. So they're going to give us $3,000. They're going to give us $1,500 in December and $1,500 in June, and we're basically hands off. We'll help them any way we can, but they run the program. So I just need an approval to enter into this agreement for.
I need a motion. Sheila Samples makes a motion. Brian Covey makes a second. Any discussion? Like to call for a vote? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have approval of the FY 22-23 Professional Learning Plan.
This is required every year, and of course, you're more than welcome to look at it. It's the same as it was last year, only it's updated with all the new trainings and everything that everybody is required to do throughout the district, so it's got all of that in there. You've had a chance to review that. It does take separate board action, so I'm asking you to, Rebecca, I'm asking you to approve the Professional Learning Plan for this school year.
I'd like to have a motion to approve the revision to the Professional Learning Plan. Sheila Samples makes a motion. Do we have a second? Tammy Hardy makes a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. And so next, we have consideration and approval of the revision to the Board Policy 8.1 Curriculum.
This policy had not been revised in a long time, and Donald has sort of been taking some of this by the horn, and we got to looking at this curriculum policy, and there's some, especially some things in here that I'd say that probably our student representative didn't do. She probably did not complete pre-cow by the time she was a junior, okay? But it says that every student at Estill County High School will complete pre-cow. I don't know when this policy was written, but it is very out of date, so we're going to get this policy back to where it should be, and so that we don't have unreal expectations in terms of what our students are doing. It's according to, well, it's not on here. I don't know when the last revision date was, but you can see that we're taking a bunch of this stuff out. Of course, this falls under the new SB1 with the superintendent having the authority over the curriculum within the school district. My recommendation, approve the change in this policy, and we'll get it updated.
I need a motion to approve the revision to the Board Policy 8.1 Curriculum. Sheila Samples makes a motion. Do I have a second? Carrie Smallwood makes a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
You'll see it one more time under consent next month.
Mr. Saylor, that brings us down to our consent items.
Pretty much, you've got the board minutes, you've got the treasurer's report, you've got the cybersecurity readiness report that Jeremy has to submit every year, and it's pretty much the same documents.
Yeah, I always have to say this this time every year. It's the same thing we've always done, but I have to make sure I'm verbally said and that we have enough minutes to know that we have cybersecurity policies in place and procedures set in place by KDE, that if we, just like any business, if for some reason we have a cybersecurity attack, if they steal student or staff, social security members, and it's gotten out there, the board is responsible to put into it, whatever the cost may be, for doing what we got to do in terms of protecting people's identities and things of that nature. So we have to make sure that the board is aware, that we are putting all of the cyber insurance in place to help us protect us on that. And one thing of note, I have Rebecca add this today. We just had a meeting this morning. KDE is in the process of mandating an updated multi-factor authentication protocol, and I'll explain what that is here in just a second, for every single staff member. We're not doing it for students, they're only requiring it for staff members. Most of our staff don't even know this yet. As a matter of fact, you are, everyone watching is just now pretty much learning about it. I have sent out an email or two, kind of prepping everybody. But as of right now, when you guys want to sign into your email or sign into a computer, you put in your username and your password. That's the way we've always done it. But with the new mandated multi-factor authentication protocol required by KDE, that I'm going to be sending information out about, you will have to do some type of multi- or secondary form of authentication. You're probably already doing this with your bank accounts. And when you log in the very first time, it requires you to get a text and a PIN code, and then you've got to enter in that PIN code. That's the way it's going to be for every single school district in the state, with the board or staff. There will be apps on your phone that it has a revolving PIN that would change it once a minute. Brian, you want to do, I think you want to do this at a call. So this is not something new. This is not something unique. It's something that most people are starting to be comfortable with. But just know, even you guys as board members moving forward, once we turn it on, the first time you guys log into a computer, you will have to put in that PIN code. And then as long as you're on our local domain, it's, you're able to log in whenever you need to. As soon as you take a computer, all domain, you'll have to put in that PIN code again, or if you bring in a personal one. So again, this is security mechanism, and the entire reason for me saying this is to make sure it's part of the public record and to make sure that everybody is aware that it is coming, and there's nothing we can do about it. We just want to buckle up and hang on for the ride, and it's going to be mine and Andrew's job to make sure that number one, Mr. Saylor gets into his account version before most. After he's done it, I want to thank everybody else to make sure that everybody else is aware. But again, the main point of this consent item is to make sure that you understand that the board is responsible for data protection of what's called PII, or personal identifiable information, of all staff and students, in case we are hacked. That's why we get a lot of people mad at. Why is it so hard for me to get into my account? Why did my password change? Why did it log me out? Well, it's, unfortunately, we live in a world that people want to try to hack systems, and it's mandatory that accounts get automatically logged out after a certain amount of time, and it just, it's the nature of the beast, and it's something we have to do. But that's why Mr. Saylor hired me, is to try to make it as easy as possible.
We appreciate you very much.
I also like its pretty face.
And does anybody have any questions on that?
And I can tell you this, don't tell me I can't do anything about it. I'm retiring, man. I quit. June 30th.
Just for a year, after a year, somebody else, somebody else.
You just have to retrain us all.
That's exactly right.
Going on then, you got your KSBA policy updates. Those are the ones you approved last time. This time's for second reading to finalize those, and Rebecca will get that all sent in. District assurances. You all always like this document. You know, it's the one, if you open it up, it's about 563 pages. I have to go through and click yes on every one of those things, basically saying that we will abide by all policies, federal and state, in terms of what we do in our school district. You also have the federal cash request statement of assurance, and that's in order for us to be able to get back reimbursement on our federal funds, title programs, special ed, food service, ESER dollars. So all that is in there. You also have a revision to your district staffing policy. The big thing there was. The big thing there was just, I know that we had, everything in purple is stuff that you've already approved. I had to put in there, we're looking very seriously. We've had an uptick in the number of people that are applying for custodian jobs. So we may move away from our cleaning company. So I'm just letting you all know that right now. Also updated the number of special ed teachers we have. I also made a change with academic interventionists in gear up that, that they are on 185-day contract, no longer on 195-day contract. And you'll see the two school resource officers right at the bottom of that page. So I do need that approved. It's just minor revisions, nothing major, no cost to the board other than the school resource officer, as we know, that was going to give us a increase. I also have a change in salary schedule. We'd actually left a position off that has to do with our homeless, our homeless coordinator position. It's part of a new grant that we had to approve, and that has been done. We also, there goes my phone. We also had to approve, we had to change the staffing policy within the salary schedule on the two academic interventionists, and that's there as well. So those were the two things there. And then, of course, you got a list of the people that's approved to conduct ARCs. And that is a very important job because those ARC, those release committees that meet with special needs students. You've got to make sure you have somebody that's trained, that knows what they're doing. And not only to stand up for the rights of kids, but stand up for the rights of parents as well. And we want to always make sure that we're doing that. So those are the consent items, and it is my recommendation that you all approve those.
I need a motion to approve the consent items. That's discussed. Brian Covey makes a motion. Sheila Samples makes a second. Do we have any comments or discussion? If not, I'd like to call for a vote. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries with a 5-0 vote. Mr. Saylor, give us your superintendent report.
You have the personnel action so far, and I think this is the big one. I think it's got most of the positions in there that's been filled. We've got less than five positions right now that's been filled. And we've even got some fillers on a couple of those. So we feel like we're in a really good spot here moving forward. I'm really appreciative, and I know that our employees are with the raises. I think that's helped us also keep some of our employees. I do know there's been some school districts that were not able to give raises, and I think it's hurt them in terms of retaining staff. Yeah, there, there is definitely a teacher shortage out there. Used to when you had a teaching position. For instance, an elementary teaching position, you'd have 25 applications. Now we're lucky if we get two, three. A lot of people in alternate programs, option six, MAT. So just we'll, we'll keep plugging along and doing whatever we need to do. I wanted you to know that we have got our risk assessment verification in for safe schools, and that's been done. We also have to complete an SRO report that should have just been turned in as well. Steven's taking care of those. Updates on opening day, open house, and other dates. This was taken from an email that I sent out to all of our staff. I think you all got this email as well. We tried to fill in the times for you all so that you will know what times each of these are. Opening day's the 15th. As you know, it's at West Urban. The picnic starts at 11 o'clock. Everybody needs to be there for lunch if you can make it. And Mallory, if you can make it, you're more than welcome to come on opening day and partake of the festivities with us. On the 16th at 9:00 a.m., we'll meet at the high school auditorium. Mr. Wayne Young from KESA will be here. And we'll be talking about the roles and responsibilities of a teacher and what teachers should be doing in the classroom and what their role is in the classroom. So I think it will be, and this is not only teachers, this applies to all school personnel in terms of what are your job responsibilities and what is not your job responsibility. So I think it's very important. We've had too many incidents of people that are not, or doing things that's not part of their job responsibility, and it gets us in trouble. And Rebecca, if you don't care, we'll make a copy of this and make sure all of them get a hard copy, okay? Poor old Donna's trying to take a picture here. August 17th, first day for kids. August 22nd is the first day at South Urban. You see all of your open houses there. We now only have one open house per night. So they start on, the middle school starts on Tuesday to 9th. West Urban is Wednesday to 10th. Estle Springs is Thursday, the 11th. I said Thursday, Thursday. Then we got the High School ATC and Success Academy, which is Monday, August 15th. And South Urban will wait until we start school for everybody else. They'll meet on Thursday, the 18th. And then don't forget the Engineers Stadium dedication, August 19th. Will start at 7:00. I advise you to get there early if you want a parking space. I expect the biggest crowd ever to be in an event in Estle County here that night. It's going to be a fantastic night. It's what we, it's what we promised, was it not, Ms. Donna? It's what we promised, and it's been delivered. And we're expecting a huge crowd, and it's good. It's good to be able to promise something and then be able to deliver on it. And this is the final thing, and everything else that we're doing is gravy. Estle Springs, Phase 2, gravy. So a lot of good things going on. Any questions about those or anything else? Any questions? I went ahead and put your student enrollment numbers. One thing that I would have you look at, the total enrollment for the school district right now, you can see at the end of May, we had 2075. Right now, we have 2126. So you can see that's up about 51 students. And I told you earlier that we've had over 100 students come back from homeschool. You said, well, where's the other 50? Remember what I told you about kindergarten? Because you graduated almost 160 students, and you've only got 100 and what is it right now? I think you've got 125 kindergarten students. So I mean, that right there is a loss of almost 50 kids. Mr. Norton's done a fantastic job trying to get our homeschool parents back, our homeschool kids back. And I would just tell any parent that is homeschooling their child, we would be more than glad to have your child back. And we'll pull out all stops to make sure that they're welcome and address any concerns that you have. We also respect the right of parents that do homeschool and do it correctly. I have no problem with parents that want to homeschool their children as long as they're doing it correctly. I, I do know of situations where we have charges right now that's been filed on homeschool parents that have not done what they're supposed to do. And educational neglect is just as much child abuse as anything else. But now, we're willing to work with our parents. We'll remove all barriers. If you want to bring your child back, you need to call Mr. Norton. We'll remove any and all barriers to make sure your child's happy and back in school. Last thing is the Estle Springs-West Urban update. And this is the last edition of full steam ahead because we've addressed these issues. And this all came about as part of the reconfiguration. Ms. Isaacs, Ms. O'Brien, and our curriculum coaches have worked hard to address these issues. And this, this went out to all staff members again, letting them know where we're at. We've addressed the concerns that we have. We're ready to go. We're, we're ready to go. We're moving there very quickly, ready to go, ready to welcome kids back. That's my report.
Okay. So we're down to the board member forum. Does anyone have anything they'd like to report or discuss?
They're still processing the insurance payment. It'll be done. It's just got to be, it's a pretty big project, too. And we basically put it off a little bit because it involves one of our contractors right now. So the thing is, right now, let's get the high school project done and be presentable on that night. I will find out. I'll get you an update because I've not heard anything out of it in a while either. I'll find out, and Kenny can get us an answer to that. I'll, I'll get that and let you all know. And they said, they didn't talk about baseball, softball. There's a few little things still going on up there. We've got to, we've got to renovate the sprinkler system on both fields. They just need massive work that we'll do as a maintenance project. And as far as everything else, it's pretty much done.
Did we come up with a resolution on that girl's concession stand on? It only had one half door. Did we come up with what we're going to do to fix that?
We talked about Dutch doors, and no, I haven't because really I've been so involved on the other. Let me check and see if we can do a Dutch door for the concessions.
Because on the visitor's side, it's a full door.
It's the same way at the baseball, too, that you only have one serving. You only have the one serving line, and that's the way we designed them. And it may have been a mistake. You know, we could have always entered from that other door if we thought about it. But it might be easy saw to do. It makes it more difficult. It's not difficult for our home fans. It's more difficult on the visiting fans. So we'll see what we can. That's two questions. Anybody else? Well, when it was first designed, they sent me the design, and they had a little bitty, it was about 45, 45. I said, if we're going to put an A, let's put an A in there. What are we doing? Let's make this field look, let's, it needs an eye pop. And man, it does.
They had to suck it laid out on the field after they put the turf down. Then they had to cut it around that, I think, to inset it.
Yeah. Listen, every hash mark, those yard markers, every hash mark was cut out and sewn back. They hand, I mean, they had a machine that sewed them. I won't say they're hand-sewn, but it's the old sewing machine. Every letter in the end zone, Estle, Engineers, every letter was cut out and sewn back in, even the numbers on the field. It was a heck of a, I mean, it was something else to watch.
That was my, that's my daily lunch trip.
You go out there and see what happened?
Well, that's my momma's trip on Friday.
Yeah, it's fantastic. I mean, the press box went up the other day. Scoreboards, they're supposed to be drilling, hopefully they're drilling the pilot holes right now. The truck was on its way. We've got a little bit of issue with the scoreboard itself, not the advertising signs, not the video board, the actual scoreboard. They can't find one. So they're trying to find an alternate scoreboard for us to use until it comes in, which we've been told could be February or March. That's how big a delay there is right now. We may have to have somebody hold up signs, you know? Get us one of them big clocks. Maybe we can get the rabbit from Alice in Wonderland to come out with a stopwatch and clock. But we're hoping to have that addressed. Field's fantastic. That wall is absolutely beautiful for that facility. I mean, I'm, I'm proud as a peacock about it.
I wonder if something about click drum signs were like Estle Springs and the high school and middle school.
Estle Springs, there is an electronic sign in there.
I've got the outside show on the outside replay that one's been there since the very beginning of school. Like, what's carbon hands?
Yeah, the, yeah, the, there is one in that project for Estle Springs. The wiring or the conduit has been put in place for one at the high school. And we need to decide what kind of sign we want to buy. I want to get everything done, make sure. Because based on what you want to buy, if you want to buy a video board, an actual video board, you can spend upwards of $75,000 to $100,000 for one. And I think if you're going to do that type of sign at high school, middle school, ATC is where it needs to be. But the Estle Springs sign will mirror what's at West Urban, is what it should be. So there will be electronic sign in that project. And I'm going to verify that, but I made sure that I told them.
We talked about that.
Yeah, we'll get, I'll verify it, but it's, it's in the project.
Do we have something we need to upgrade?
I did check on, I did check on the plaques from the old schools, like Hargit and all those. I cannot locate the plaque for Irving Grade. My opinion is it's still in the building. I, I don't know if they covered it over or they left it there for historical significance. I don't know that, I've not been in there. We probably need to contact somebody. I can find, I found one for Harg. I found one for, I found a couple others. I found one for Ravenna, but I cannot find one for Irving Grade. So I believe that it's probably in it. If you remember, that was done as a grant project.
Can we make a replica of it?
Possibly could, but I'll, I'll find, I'm still trying to locate those. And that's something you asked me to check on, too.
The last thing I'll ask is, everybody's asking me, are you going to be, when you put the rubberized track, on, rubberized bars and on the track, will you be painting it blue? Or everybody's asking me different colors.
It's black.
Black.
Yeah. Blue, I think color's almost doubled the cost. So it's about $115,000 to put the rubber on that track that we agreed to do.
They were bringing in the gravel, whatever it's like.
They're supposed to black top tomorrow. I tell you what, they may, may have to go to Lee County and get me out of jail tomorrow if they're not black topping in the morning. Because I've done nothing but fuss all week. I, I hate myself. Even when I go home, I fuss so much. That's all I do.
They were definitely bringing in the gravel because I was behind about six trucks going home.
Mr. Saylor, I want to circle back around before we wrap up the board meeting. I mean, we spend a lot of time at every meeting going over facilities and plans and, you know, upgrades that we're giving throughout the district. But I want everyone to keep in mind that this is all for the kids. And our main focus, once we have all these facility projects done, is on academics. And that is our big focus this year, is really pushing these kids to get back to a sense of normalcy and move them ahead so they can be career-ready, college-ready, and they can be ready to go out into the real world and be productive members of society. So all of these things with facilities that we do has a purpose and a plan behind it. And that's to help move these kids along so they can be competitive in this world.
We want to remove all barriers, and that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to remove all barriers. And hopefully, facilities is part of that, providing safe and secure environments is part of that, providing great instructional programs. That's the reason why we had the reconfiguration, as you know. We have, we're in the second year of a three-year strategic plan that's focused on what does a graduate look like? And that's what, that's what the plan focuses on from South Urban all the way to Estle County High School.
And I just wanted to circle back around to that and say how excited we are for kids to get back into school.
Good point. We're, we're ready to go. I mean, we're ready and raring to go right now. I don't know if y'all got anything else, but I was going to ask if Mallory wanted to say anything in her last board meeting with us, if there's anything Mallory would like to add.
It's been an honor for sure to kind of see what all goes on behind the scenes. It's a lot more than what I was thinking, you know? I am truly honored to have been, and I'm so happy for what's coming. Abby is a wonderful person, so I know she'll do great. So I'm just super thankful to have been here this past year. It's been awesome. Especially with all of the new changes and stuff, you know, it's been cool seeing everything.
Well, you're a special little girl. You really do great. We appreciate you.
And that's the thing that makes me the saddest. It did during the baseball, softball dedication, thinking about the kids that just barely missed out, that barely missed out. But one day, hopefully, Mallory will go off and do great things. And one day she'll come back here and be a part of this community, maybe. And maybe her kids will be able to experience these facilities. And then we got one request. On your first day of school at Western, you wear your Medal of Excellence. You wear it to every class and say, you know, my superintendent, put this medal around my neck.
So I swear.
Do we have any public comments, Jeremy?
None submitted.
I'd like to call for an adjournment. Brian and Sheila make motions, and we have a 5-0 vote.
Our intentions will be that we will do a virtual board meeting on the 12th. And just be prepared that the tax rate could be on there. But our goal is, I believe it's 51.1%. 51.3 is our current tax rate.
Are you talking about the 5th or the 12th?
I'm sorry, did I say the 12th? The 5th on 2022 at 12. I'm sorry. Let me say it again, the 5th at 12. And then, other than that, we would be asking for the two bid and to approve the project at Springs to go on. And if we get the finding we want from South Urban, we will have an emergency BG1 for district safety to upgrade middle school in South Urban. That's your agenda items. I'll share those with you tomorrow, Rebecca. Thank you all.